All right, so we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are the Board of Education norms, which are available in the board packet, and the approval of the agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda, this September 19th, 2023, regular open session meeting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next, we have the MSBA Monthly Report.
Welcome to the September edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the release of this year's state assessment data. The preliminary results released by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education show overall statewide scores are mixed when compared to the prior year. ELA showed small improvements in elementary grades and in high school, and small declines or flattening in middle school. Mathematics scores showed increases in most grades and courses. Science scores maintained with the exception of an increase in biology. Regarding the results, Commissioner of Education Margie Van Deven said the data emphasizes the need to continue deploying state and local resources to best support and promote student learning.
If we're going to embrace literacy, let's do it all the way, right? And this, we know what we need to do there, let's focus on that. Let's focus on early learning, let's keep focusing on great teachers in every classroom, growing our principals to support those teachers, making sure we have superintendents who are hiring good principals to support the teachers, training our local school board members. These are things that I think we have all agreed are primary to making sure we move the needle.
With schools across the state back in session, don't forget to share the excitement of students, staff, and the entire public school community with your local legislators. Invite your legislators to celebrate the return to school with a day touring your school district. MSBA President Ruth Johnson says that activities such as legislator visits are just part of year-round advocacy efforts.
I truly believe that advocacy begins with relationships. That is something that I began my first year of being on my local board, and it's vitally important that you reach out and get connected with your elected officials at your city level, your county level, your state level, and federal level even. Beginning those relationships before you need to have those hard discussions is what's crucial.
In addition to building relationships with legislators, building relationships and networking with peers is a great way for school board members to learn various approaches to common challenges. With that in mind, MSBA's fall regional meetings are back. Fall meetings return in each of MSBA's 17 regions this September and October. These events give local board members the opportunity to learn and network with colleagues from their part of the state. Sign up for your region's meetings and come ready to play. MSBA's Leadership Development Team has created an engaging and educational challenge where members will team up and work together to answer school board scenarios. To find the date and location of your region's meeting, visit the MSBA website. And it's not too late to register for the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials. The conference will be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state along with a great lineup of general session speakers. The conference will also feature the Education Expo, the Student Showcase, and much more. Visit the MSBA website for more information. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in October for the next MSBA Board Report. As we wrap up, here are some closing thoughts specifically for board members from MSBA President Ruth Johnson as we start a new school year.
I would just say to other local board members, enjoy what you do. This is a journey that will change you, and you will see public education in a completely different way. You will see that students are truly what matters most. And everything that we do as a board member should revolve around is what we're doing, is what we're deciding, making it better for students to learn every day.
All right, before we go to the consent agenda, Dr. Taylor will probably do this later, I just want to welcome everybody to the newly remodeled Bloomsdale Elementary, so, you like it?
We love it.
Next, we have the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next are guidelines for public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. Per policy BDDH-1, public participation at board meetings, the following rules will apply to the public comment portion. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during the period. Each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Discussion will be limited to items from the posted agenda. All speakers must provide their name and address prior to speaking. If there is insufficient time for everyone to speak, the board will encourage participants to submit their questions in writing or utilize the process for putting an item on the agenda. I do not have any public comment cards. All right, thank you. Next, we have the report of the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to Bloomsdale Elementary. It smells new and clean and fantastic facility. First on our agenda is enrollment count for the first day of school. I attempted every way possible to get away from this because I don't know how accurate the numbers are, but it's what we traditionally do, so we are going to continue to report the numbers on the first day of school. As you can see up on the screen, for pre-K and early childhood special education, overall, we've had an increase of one student from last year. For both Bloomsdale Elementary School and St. Genevieve Elementary, we are 24 students up from last year. Total of 850 at both schools. Sixth grade through eighth grade, middle school, we are down 21 students from last year. And ninth through 12th, high school, we are down four students from last year. So overall, if we look at on the left, 2223 school year, and, I'm sorry, this school year, that should be the beginning of the 2324 school year and then the prior school year. You can see we are down one student overall. I am looking forward to tomorrow. Tomorrow is our first enrollment count that we have to report to the state, and that gives us a little more definitive, a little more concrete numbers regarding enrollment. So, those are the first day of school enrollment numbers. Next, on the superintendent's report, we have the technology report from Mrs. Nancy Toomes.
So, for the tech department this year, we rotated out seventh through 12th grade Lenovo Chromebooks. We got the Gen 3 set of Lenovo Chromebooks. We bought about 850 new Chromebooks and rotated out the first gen ones, and they were, they were used up, they were ready to go. If you can imagine. We also bought both elementary teacher laptop and projectors for all their rooms. We're gonna, we've already placed all the laptops. Projectors will come throughout the year. And we maintain K-12 Chromebooks for each student, so there's quite a few roaming around. We also have middle school and high school laptops. Were, for the teachers, were all upgraded to Windows 11. And our hope is to have all of the computers done within the district to Windows 11 before the end of the year. All right, and we also are purchasing some new equipment for the computer science class in the high school, we're very excited about that. We did file E-Rate for Backbone this year. The Backbone replacement is about a year out, so we filed now, we won't get until next year. So, that's just the backup from technology coming out of China and all that, all that good stuff. So you just gotta wait your turn. Safety, we did add new video camera server and some new cameras. We upgraded to a more comprehensive alert system and app. I don't know if anybody's spoken to you about that yet, but we did get a new app. It's going very well, we really like it. Our car line is getting a new system this year. Hopefully we'll have that in place sometime by the end of the month, we're hoping. And we put our Power School on a new server system. So we also provide funding for the enhancement grant, and that covers VoAG, the business department, and auto mechanics class. We did not purchase anything for auto mechanics this year, but the entrepreneurship class that started in the high school, we helped purchase a bunch of equipment down there. She's now doing sublimation printing and creating t-shirts, all kind of good stuff for her little store that she started, and also a vinyl cutting machine. And we're rotating out her visual and printing equipment as well. The VoAG department wanted a whole new set of laptops, so those are coming. And they also will be getting a visual and printing equipment replacement. And Industrial Arts will be getting a new laser cutter to use with his system down there. We offered an online graduate class over the summer. We had some teachers that took that class to use teacher tools and implementation within their class, so they learned about a tool and then they had to write a lesson where they use the tool with their kids. They also learned about new AI tools and how to use those as a teacher. They're fun, but they can also be very helpful. And they also earned three credit hours through MOVAP. We also enforced some multi-factor authentication. When school started, everybody loved that. And we also implemented an online awareness video that all the staff have to watch. And phishing service will be implemented soon, so coming your way. And then, that's pretty much our recap for the year. We've done a lot of things, it doesn't seem like we did a whole lot, but we do a lot. And we are settling in nicely for the rest of the year. Does anybody have any questions, or?
Nancy, are you seeing issues like with building materials like with computers? Or that we need to order things? I know you talked about one that's a year out, but with...
I have to order things sooner, absolutely. We have seen a lag, well, for instance, in the pack, we had to replace some of our audio equipment out there from a storm. We're still waiting on parts, it's been eight months. So yes, there is, there's a definite lag. Batteries for radios, of all things, you can't get them, you can't get those. So we have to put an order in and hope we get something, so, yeah. We've definitely seen some...
Are you able to order like a couple extra?
Yeah, we try and get, we try and get a stash, kind of. Put back a little stash, when we can, if it's affordable. But you can't do that for really expensive items. So yeah, there, there's a definite delay. Anybody else? Well, thank you, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Your student tech kids are doing awesome.
We get a good set, we work in coordination with the SBE program through the business department and the high school, and we hire kids through there, and they come and help us throughout the day, and it's been very helpful. Yes, we, we've been very fortunate with that through the years. We've had a lot of good kids.
Nancy, I want to thank your department for that transition trajectory.
Oh, well, I hope it... It's been a learning curve.
It's been a learning curve.
As with everything.
We've had to survive without their support.
As with everything. Right, it, everything's like that. We appreciate it, thank you. Yes, we appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have principal reports.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
We started with a variety of just some fun back-to-school pictures. You can see there was a lot of team building and collaborations with the students as the teachers tried to establish their classroom culture. In the top left, you see the little crayon experiment. I believe all of you saw that on social media and our Facebook and newsletters. It works. It took till about 1:00 in the afternoon for them to start melting, and then it was just, it just kept melting. Despite the heat and inside recess for the first five days of school, I think we had a really good start to school and we're off and running. We've done quite a bit of back-to-school testing. I think we've just rounded the corner and we're about ready to dig into other things besides testing. The, this slide is our new student breakfast and our grandparent VIP day. The counselors, Mrs. Grimminger and Mrs. Kingery invite Mr. Kingery and I, and we meet with all of our students, grades one through five, that have transferred in from another building, and so there's our new crew. And when we started asking students where they were from, most of them were from Valley, Zell, and Bloomsdale. So we had very few students from different districts, but we did have quite a few new students. As always, our third grade team, they host a grandparent VIP day, and each classroom takes one day a week, so Monday through Thursday, we had grandparents in the building. They enjoyed donuts with the VIPs, and then they did some directed drawings and some games before taking them on the building tour. And as you may know, they see every nook and cranny of our building, and they show them everything and they drag it out as long as they can, but the grandparents love it. And then recently, we just had our PTO family game night. I believe 48 families signed up for that. It was, we had quite a packed house in the cafeteria. Sam Kurtz, our PTO president, she just brought in a wide assortment of games, and the families just got to pick them and play, and no one was on phones or computers, and so it was a really nice night. And then I've seen people out in the community since, and they really were like, that was such a fun idea. So, thank you, PTO, for that. And we also had a PTO meeting that was very well attended. I believe we had a ride around, 50 people attending, and that was a mix of teachers and families. Okay, so we have our positive office referrals. We just have our students pictured here with their names. We had quite a few, Adeline Weathers, Brady Ram, Cohen Grass, Phoenix Flig, Hannah Tucker, she had two, Cameron Keeker, Aubrey Hadle, Bentley Reese, A.J. Robles, Isaiah Baker, Colton Thompson, Clara Brown and Audrey Gack, Chevy Davis, Langston Roy, Kobe Dodson, Jamison Walk, Kane and Kwan, Rowan Blair, Zoe Grass, Monroe Kelly, Nora Roth, Lilly Adams, and then Brenlee Schneble. And so those are our positive office referrals, just from the beginning of school till now. And I know Mr. Kingery's been out the last two days, and I think he has about 12 more sitting in his mailbox when he gets back. So we've had quite a few of those. And then finally, we're going to do our future teacher superstaff. Ms. Jack Ladoshner, our fifth grade teacher, was chosen by her peers to be the future teacher. A few things they said about her was she was dedicated to her job, always seeking to do her best, gives her all. She's brought in exciting momentum to the team, has great ideas and leadership skills, and she's rocking her move to SGE. And she has a busy plate with Emerald, she's completing her math specialist, she's participating in letters training, and then she's still coming to SGE and giving it her all every day. And then, our superstaff is Ashley Gretzmaaker. She's our new Title I instructional aide, and she's really come in and she's done a great job. She has a positive attitude, she's willing to do whatever needs to be done. She goes out of her way to help, and teachers have even said that on her breaks, she'll pop in to see if there's anything she can do to help. She's an awesome resource in the classroom. And just in a very short time, they were impressed that she learned all the students' names that she was working with and started to build relationship with them. So that's very important in the title role. So, that's it for St. Genevieve Elementary.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a recent picture. They all came out to help take care of the kiddos while we got to take a faculty and staff picture, so we're pretty excited about that. Bailey just posted those on Facebook, if you want to check out our page. Faculty of the Month, Dana Palmer. She's a great team member and friend, she is wonderful to work with and a huge asset to our team. She was nominated by a second grade teacher. And Staff of the Month, Ms. G goes above and beyond. She helps out where needed, and she was nominated by a few teachers. All right, our positive office referrals, Nolan Ram, we'll start at the top. Nolan Ram, Tristan Rapp, Amory Enman, Miles Frick, Georgia Stewart, Stephen Ferris, Thomas Clements, Zanuel Klump, Tinley Geddiner, Aiden Johnson, Cassidy Halberbeck, and Arian Pendle, and Bo Jones, Lincoln Geddiner, Annie Turpin, Elon Cottonmeyer, Ben Plataff, Bowen Hager, Chloe Schwint, Bobby Parker, Rage Faulkner, and Grayson App. We had quite a few at the beginning of the year as well. And then our whole third grade got a positive office referral from a teacher, so. And we had the beginning of the year fun. The weather, as you all know, was super warm, like Nanya said, inside recess. So the top row, you could see our activities that teachers did with the kiddos to experiment with the hot weather. We did the melting of the crayons in second grade. Our fourth grade classes made smores. So the chocolate melted, and they used pizza boxes and a tin foil for the reflection, and that was successful. Then the fifth grade kiddos, they did a team building activity. They had to, they filled the bucket with water, laid on the ground, and had to take a sock off one at a time without dumping the water. Needless to say, they were not very successful. They were all pretty wet by the end of the... We had our new science kits for third through fifth grade in Bloomsdale and St. Genevieve Elementary. So we wanted to see some of the experiments that are taking place. As you know, the hands-on learning is the way to go, and we were pretty excited. I know Nanya's crew is too, to be able to do more science experiments. That is an area at Bloomsdale Elementary that we need to grow in, and that's going to be a big focus this year for us, is our science, science in the classroom and science scores in the map assessment. So, down here, they were experimenting with using, separating, you're going to see it tomorrow, some of you are in Ms. Rice's class. They were separating materials, so. And then, on the far side, they were using circuits with batteries, so the kids are loving it. And our PTO did a back-to-school carnival. They had the bubble machine, face painting, Kona Ice, cotton candy, the bounce house, coach getting dunked in the dunk booth quite a bit, and Mr. Stupi did as well, some games and face painting. The kids had a blast. It was a great weather and a wonderful turnout, so our PTO, we have a whole new PTO board, and they're, they're all gung ho and ready to, ready to plan some fun for the kids, so that was a good time, had to. And our second graders celebrated Dot Day. It was September 15th, and it was, it was an author that wrote the dot story, and he was trying, is trying to make this a celebration. I know, doesn't your building do this as well?
We've done it before, we did not do it this year.
Well, it's to use, or have kids kind of come out of their shell in creativity and courage. So, our second graders celebrated that this year. And we had the Jolly Trolley, we have some teachers that took that on, and they're going around to just lift some spirits with the teachers. And we had some parents from the St. Genevieve First Baptist Church do, they both came on Friday, so the kids, or the teachers were treated really well on Friday, but we were very grateful for that, so, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
I want you to just look at this handsome group on the screen. And as, as is true for most group photos, there's the good one, right? And then there's the silly one, that, that also exists too. And I want to be honest with you, I thought for just a minute about using the silly photo here, but as these meetings are recorded for posterity, I thought it was best that we put our best faces forward. All joking aside, though, I deliberately included this picture tonight. I held on to it because I wanted it to be handy for this presentation, because I want you to understand that the people on this screen are a major reason why I'm able to come to work with a positive attitude and go home at the end of the day with a positive attitude. I really appreciate their hard work, their enthusiasm, and I think it has shown in the beginning of this school year. And you can advance, Dr. Taylor, thank you. And, and I hope that we were able to convey some of that excitement, some of that enthusiasm at our open house, and we appreciate you guys being there. And Bailey, thank you very much for arranging all of the wonderful groundbreaking photos that night. Here's one of my favorites, by the way, at the bottom. If you had a chance to mosey around that night, I hope you got to meet some teachers and also pick up some spirit gear. We, we had a wonderful crew of girls working that table for us, and we appreciate them too. I did include one of our construction photos here. I am also working on a time lapse presentation for you as promised, but the, the thing about those time lapses is you can't give it away too early, you know? So we're gonna, we're gonna let it build a little bit and build a little bit. So most of our shots are shooting out this way, but it doesn't quite do justice to the depth of that project, and I literally mean the, of that project. But I am proud to report that we have one-third of an elevator shaft now. That's very exciting. And, and, and this is a familiar perspective for a lot of us in middle school because it seems none of us are able to resist stopping to look out the window right there to see what's going on today. And I think it's a great experience for our students to go through too. And I just absolutely love that our construction started at the beginning of the school year and is scheduled to end at the end of the school year. I just love the timing of that. Thank you, Dr. Taylor. So again, we're off to a great start on the left-hand side here. We just, I just wanted to include some of our spirit photos with you. You know, we really promote our green and white days on Friday, and here are some advisory shots for you. And then in the center and on the right, those are some of our dragon groups that have already kicked off. We're in, I think, our third week of dragon groups, and you guys get to hear me talk about those every year. And I'm not going to miss the opportunity one more time to say how proud I am of that project and the work that our teachers put into that. Together, they arranged for 27 different dragon groups, based not only on what their own aptitude is, but by listening to the students to find out what they want to learn about and what kinds of things they're, they're tuned into. And I'm just so proud that we're able to do that for our kids. So, as I said, we're in about our third week now, I think, so we'll do two more weeks, that'll be five, and then we'll rotate to a new group. And then after five, we'll rotate to a new group so that they get lots of different experiences throughout the year. Our Dragon's on Fire, we've, just like the other schools, we've already had a lot this year. And you guys know I like to take the time to read those names, so if you'll indulge me, we have Gabe Bly, Braxton Hathcock, Sidney DeRouche, Kaylee Prizette, Jaden Jordan, Kenzie Decker, Oliver Geg, Cullen Palmer, JD Loudenback, Robert Ream, Nolan Wolk, Shaylan Wolk times two, Myla Shinnerbarker, Jackson Kelly, Audrey Harrell, Brooklyn Wybrecht, Dalton Bowman, Cameron Beckett, Michael Hendricks, Natalie Klepper, Camden Cooper, Dane Evesizer, Sean Morris, Landon Geg, and Gunner Abston. So hats off to those guys and gals, they're already off to a great start this year. Our Spotlight Award this year went with a large number of votes to Mallory Whipfler. You know, she does a great job in the office for us, and a lot of the comments that we got were about how helpful she is, what a positive attitude she has, she always helps people with a smile on her face. And so we congratulate Mallory for that, but I also want to mention that we had nine or 10 individuals nominated this month. And I think that's a great testament to the kind of work that we're seeing take place at middle school. So I want to congratulate all of those guys as well. But this month, Mallory won out, so congratulations to Mallory. Coming up at middle school, we had our first club day today. Tomorrow is our visit from the Chamber of Leadership Group, and we're really looking forward to that. We've got some great things in store to show those guys as they complete that leadership course through the Chamber of Commerce. And we're really going to take advantage of that opportunity and brag about what we do at St. Jen Middle School, and I know the other buildings are as well. Grading period coming off is coming up at the end of the week. School pictures next week, and just as a reminder, all of that ordering is online now. I piped that out through social media, and it's also in the announcements, if anyone needs access to that. And then, before you know it, we're going to be in homecoming week. So the days are just flying by, but in the, in the best way possible. We're having a great time at SGMS, and we really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
This is going to be short and sweet for me. I just want to say hello, and it's good to see all of you guys. And to briefly have the mic before I turn it over to these guys behind me, I'm super excited that they are back this year. I know they got a little taste of presenting last year, but Adriana Bennett and Charles Corbett, fresh out of football practice, rushing here this evening to be with us all, so I'm going to turn it over to them. I know they've got a lot of exciting things that they want to share with you of what's going on at the high school, so, great to see you guys.
Thank you.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
Okay, so just before, just before we go, if we could go back just one.
Already jumped the gun, sorry about that.
Okay, so on the side over there, because we're going to dip into it later, but I don't think I put the picture on there. The middle right is the freshman mural that's being painted by Emmy Brown and Anna Fisher. Okay, now we can go.
On this slide, we have our Elk Student of the Month Penny Yang and our Rotary Student of the Month Kate Mesple. And we have our positive office referrals, there's a lot. It's Colin Haynes, Kylie Harris, Dylan Fowler, Lilian Larg... It's Colin Haynes, Kylie Harris, Dylan Fowler, Lilian Largent, Reagan Cook, Marcus Scherer, Emma Breeden, Reagan Winch, Adam Allen, Lily Reed, Evan Winters, Kayden Smith, Kennedy Bowen, Alexis Mills twice, Devon Fly, Lucas Harrell twice, Gabriel Di Macirio, Kirsten Reeves, Elijah Bennett, Levi Sutton, Jalen Brawley, Lauren Wright, Drew Merriman, Gage Herman, Riley Deck, Cheyenne Bridges, Danny Curtis, Ella Ritter, Braden Coons, Emma Carter twice, Jason Engel, and Morgan Schwint.
Okay, so for this next one, we'll focus on the left side with FFA. There's two things going on. So, on the very left side, at the SEMO Fair, the FFA sent two of their kids, Scarlett Gons and John Merklin, to put in their goats in the fair. Scarlett Gons ended up fifth in heavy and lightweight. And John ended up third in heavyweight.
And then also there we have the Missouri, oh, that's right there, yearbook. The yearbook coming out, they got, the Wallsworth Yearbook awarded them the 2023 Yearbook Rank in the Gallery of Excellence. They wanted uniqueness and personality. They ripped off a magazine style and then they had student-drawn doodles in there to show the personality of our students. And then we have Trey Bloom and Alyssa Grass pictured there in the bottom right. They went to FCC LA State this summer and they got to travel to Denver for that with Ms. Newman.
Really quick before we go, that middle picture on FFA in the red, that was Missouri State's FFA Food and Security Day of Service. That was August 15th. And together, all of the members packed 101, 16, okay, 160,000. 160,000 meals to feed families all around Missouri. That was, I'm sorry, all around Missouri. But, but that's a really big number and that's like really big to pack that amount of meals for families around Missouri. So, I just wanted to shine light because I think a lot of our students ended up going to that. Okay, now we can go. Oh, entrepreneurship. So, I'm in entrepreneurship. It's a first-year class. Mrs. Crump teaches it. And so, kids, the kids are in charge of this. Like, we are all, we have a pretty good amount of work that we get to do and be a part of. So, we're in charge of like speaking to coaches and teachers and anyone, I think it's just open to people in our school to get, we make like t-shirts and like hoodies and sweatshirts. We're figuring out a whole lot of stuff with it. So, we made a form, like us students, we made a form to send out to all of St. Jen that talks about like what the t-shirts are for, how many they need, when they need it, all, all that kind of stuff. So, then we get to make those designs and talk to them back and forth about like if they like it and what we need to change and what brand we need to order and all of that. So, then if there are issues, we are in charge of also like, okay, well, this is, it has to be pushed back because there's not enough of this. So, that's also really cool. And like Ms. Nancy Toome said, they supplied all of our presses and sublimation machines and has been super helpful. And we're still learning a lot of that. But it's really cool because we've already started pushing out products and get to give, like, I think the cross-country, we made their t-shirts. And the cheer team, we made their t-shirts. Like, it's really cool and we've got a bunch of stuff to do. So, it's a really, really cool class that not a lot of schools get to experience. So, we're like super fortunate to have that. And the money comes back to us from FBLA. So, all of that money that we produce can go into that class, but it also carries over into us. So, that's really cool.
Also, entrepreneurship, I think Ms. Crump used that stuff to make the freshmen's t-shirts for, for this year as well. Over there on the right side is the new student brunch, some pictures from that, where all the new students and the foreign exchange students got to put their hands, handprints on the wall with the murals associated with their class. Down there is Ms. Sikowski painting a, a student's hand to put on the wall. Yeah. And we just want to make them feel comfortable and welcome in our school. Oh, me again. Picture up there in the top left, go left to right, that's, that's the football team walking out on, on game day. We're currently three and one, beating Afton Orchard Farms in Fredericktown, lost week one to Festus. And then down there on the bottom on the left side is our girls' golf team. They broke the 18-hole record again with 99 over as a team. And what is this? Sorry. They got second as a team in the St. Clair Tournament, first on our home tournament, and then first at the Farmington Meet. And then up there on the top on the, on the right side is our cross, girls' cross-country, or no, I think that's all cross-country. That's all cross-country. With that, Holland Zangaro, I think she's pictured right there in the middle. She was athlete of the week last week after getting second place overall in the Bismarck Invitational and leading our team to second as a, as a team. And then bottom, in the bottom there on the right is our volleyball team, girls' volleyball. And they're four and seven, beating R7 AV Lutheran South and Hurkey. And they, Varsity is getting ready to play Saxony Lutheran right now. Our JV just lost. If you want to go to the next one.
Or do you want to talk about esports?
Oh, yeah, esports. I saw Mr. Diamond here. Our esports team, I don't know what their record is, but it's a new, new competitive team this year. And yeah, I heard it's. He'll tell me about it tomorrow in class. He'll tell me about it tomorrow in class. But yeah, it's a, a new team we have this year.
Okay, so Teacher of the Month is Mr. Tyson Roth. And the student wrote, "He is a teacher who puts in his all every single day. He strives to make the people around him better every chance he gets. If there is any teacher deserving of Teacher of the Month, it is him. He is such a hard worker and does so much for our school to make it better. Days where I feel overwhelmed by my work, he understands and tries to help the best he can. Our school definitely wouldn't be what it is today without him. And I want him to know that his work does not go unnoticed and is very much appreciated at SGHS."
And then our upcoming stuff, we have a lot of homecoming stuff coming up next month. And that's before our next meeting. So, we just want to run this through you guys. Our homecoming court is right here. Our senior court is Kira Asher, Adriana Bennett, Tessa Hager, Addison Heberly, Alyssa Grass, and Hope Schmelzli. And the, the guys there is Jack Farlow, Dalton McBride, Aiden Meyer, Mason Nix, Tucker Reed, and Aiden White. Our junior attendant and escort is Kale Clements and Jacob Swiger. The sophomores, it's Vivian Kiefer, Luke Ferranto. And the freshmen, it's Olivia Beckerman and Anthony Apt. Some of the games we have coming up is Pinkout for volleyball and football valley games. Working with some people over at Valley and we, they're making t-shirts there for breast cancer awareness because the football game I know is in October. The volleyball is more of a overall cancer awareness night. And then we also have Powder Puff coming up for Spirit Night, which is the Wednesday before homecoming, which is October 11th. And it could be Thursday, but we have a volleyball game, game that day.
So, two things, I'd like to mention that entrepreneurship is also going to be making Pinkout stuff. And we're going to start making t-shirts and sweatshirts for sports games, sports home games to sell to people like our people. And then the other, the last thing that's on there, yeah, the last thing that's not on there is Doc mentioned the Chamber of Commerce is coming tomorrow. And some students from PAC are going to be showing them around the high school. Some classes that, again, aren't very common in other schools. So, like, we'll probably brag on our industrial tech department, entrepreneurship, auto mechanics, the art-art. Anything else you can think of? Just, we have so many amazing ones. School development. And is there anything I am not mentioning? Ag, ag. Okay. So, that's all we have. Thank you. Thank you.
Next on my report are the safety reports. We had an earthquake drill in August and a tornado drill in September. And both of those are in your board package. Next on the agenda is, congratulations are in order for one of our board members. We were notified that Mr. Josh Gettinger has completed 31 and a half hours of additional training to be designated as an advanced, to receive advanced board member certification. So, I have his. Another special note, we received a letter and Dr. Boyd sent me an email asking me if I would mind if he served on the Commissioner's Advisory Council. That is quite an honor. Of course, I said absolutely he should serve on the Commissioner's Advisory Council. So, we wanted to recognize Dr. Boyd and all of his work, not only at our school, but investing in future administrators in their surrounding areas as well. And then being recognized by the leader in education in Missouri to serve on her advisory panel. So, congratulations, Dr. Boyd. A few more updates. You did get to see one of Dr. Mercer's pictures of St. Genevieve Middle School. It is well underway. I believe they started pouring concrete yesterday around 10:00 AM. And that's the form work for that. You can get a, kind of an understanding of the depth that Dr. Mercer was talking about with that young man down at the bottom of that pit, I guess we would call it. And that's the concrete actually going in. So, progress well underway. We met with them last week and anticipate probably three or four more weeks of foundation work, concrete work, before we start the actual walls and further construction on that building. We also met on the Early Childhood Center. We're, we're making some progress. We're having some setbacks. We're making some progress. We're having additional setbacks. So, we're working through those. This is the latest rendering of where that building will sit on the land that the district purchased. The building is outlined in blue. And then the parking lots are on the top side of that. And then the playground is that L-shaped white area going around behind it. So, right now, that's where it is. We've, we've got some challenges associated with water pressure and other things like that, but we're working through those. It is moving along. The, the bid packages are out for the site work and we're due back, when are we, the 27th, we're having the bid opening for that. So, we'll have a good understanding. And I think we have quite a few organizations interested in that bid package. So, we're looking forward to that. And I have provided you a timeline. That's the long piece of paper that is sitting at your seat. Just because it's hard to see up here, I broke it up into two different segments. I often joke, every time we look at a timeline, the only thing accurate on it is the red line. That's today. Everything else is up in the air because you never know what obstacles you're going to run into. So, like I said last month, we're going to wait on St. Genevieve Elementary until school gets out, probably sometime in the summer, start date for that. But there's a general overview and update of the timeline that we currently think is somewhat close to accurate. Any questions about that? Okay, sir? And that's the end of my report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, next we have, listen, the first item under unfinished business is instructional program presentation, middle school social studies.
Come on up. Unless you'd like it. I just pressed that button. And then if you click on. Yeah. Hey, there we go. Sweet. Awesome. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Really, really glad to be here. And I think the main reason why I'm glad to be here is because I think that I get to speak for the most part about the best department in St. Jane Middle School.
Should have never gave it up.
I didn't do anything. I say the best one and then all of a sudden it goes haywire. All right. Okay, there we go. Now we got it. All right. So, one of the reasons why I believe this, because, you know, Henry Fuerz quote, I really am not doing anything. How about you do it? Obviously, I cannot.
Thanks.
Henry Fuerz had this great quote, "Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress, but working together is success." And, you know, just a, a short time ago, in the middle school, we had a large turnover on our history department. We had a couple of members leave. We replaced those, a couple of members. One of those ended up becoming my wife, which was a great change. That was fantastic. And we added another great individual, Dr. Red Oldham as well. And I think at the beginning, one of the things about it is like you're trying to figure things out. And then once you start kind of like figuring things out and working together and realizing that the most important thing is for kids, then you start realizing, hey, you know what? If we have any differences, we put anything like that aside. We find out what people's strengths are. We find a way to bring that out and we find a way to collaborate and share. And what happens is when we work together, that success is only going to benefit not just us, but our kids in the end. So, speaking of our department, my name is Michael McDaniel. I have American History I, American History II. Dr. Red Oldham behind me has American History II and World History. And my wife, Rachel McDaniel, she has American History I and World History. As far as the timeline, American History I, we cover anything from the migration of early people over into the Americas, all the way up through our Constitution, how our nation started to form early on. In American History II, we pick up with the Constitution because we end the year with the Civil War. And we really don't feel like you can talk about the Civil War unless you really hit the Constitution pretty hard and have an understanding of those sorts of things. World History, this is a little bit, I think you guys focused a little more on kind of Western Civ, isn't that correct? And some of ancient civilizations?
Yeah, we started at Stone Age, end of Renaissance and Reformation. But we do incorporate a lot of, a lot of RE stuff now, a lot of Africa stuff now I've incorporated. But yeah, it's, it's Stone Age, Renaissance, Reformation.
And I feel like we have an extremely strong department. All of us either have roles in other professional organizations. My wife was the treasurer for the Missouri Council for the Social Studies. She's been involved with that for several years. Dr. Oldham has been president of the Missouri Council for the Social Studies. I'm a member of that. We have Dr. Oldham, who has been named a Missouri Gilder-Lehrman Teacher of the Year and a national finalist. I was named Missouri Council of Social Studies History Teacher of the Year once. My wife has been nominated several times for other awards. And honestly, she deserves it because if I'm being completely honest, she is the smarter one of us too, that's for sure. And she deserves it. And you see, we, during Halloween, which is getting ready to come up, we always try to take and have a theme. Unfortunately, the students do not appreciate historical themes. I'm not sure. Our costumes have been absolutely impeccable, but for whatever reason, PE hands out candy and they, you know, we won't go into that, all right? Sour grapes, sorry. But one of the other things about us too is all of us present at conferences. We don't just sit and attend PE, PD. We take and we do PD. And I think that is something that we want too, is we want to share not just our knowledge, but all the great things that we experienced together as department to other people and how they can make themselves stronger as well. So, basically, the teacher is at the center of a lot of different things. And we think in our department here, we want to stress technology. That is one thing that we feel as a school district, and thank you to Mrs. Toome, the Technology Department, for giving us everything that we have. And we give our students a lot of things that other school districts don't. So, we appreciate that. But our job with that technology part is to make sure that we guide students along the right path with that. It's very easy to go down a rabbit hole and get to things, especially historically, that are not necessarily accurate. And our job is to help understand how that technology component works, how to find reliable sources, and also make things a little fun too, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Also, the community that we have, we have such invaluable resources at our disposal that we have to use. And we would be ignorant not to be able to use some of the people and things in our town. And then lastly, figure out how to make connections and let the kids have some fun. All right? All right? So I already talked about our technology component. These are just like some stamps of like different things that we use in our classroom. Anything from iCivics, which focuses a lot on government, activities, you know, put forth by one of our Supreme Court justices. We use the SHED group, Stanford History Education Group, great lesson plans, primary source documents for our kids, so they have those reliable sources. A lot of it, the Bill of Rights Institute. We use Mission US, which is an interactive game that puts people inside, let's say, for instance, when we go Revolutionary War. You are a printer's apprentice, and you have to be there during the time of the Revolutionary War, going out selling ads, experiencing Paul Revere and what was going on with the Boston Massacre. And basically, it's a decision-based game. Your decisions impact things that happen later in the game, and it gives the kids a lot of great things to go, to learn with. Also, those things like Google Earth. I know the kids, whenever you give them Google Earth, they're like, hey, you know what? What's the address of my house? You know? They want to find that address of the house. But how can we use that component to really teach them and take them to places? And that's where we use different websites and technology services like that. And of course, review games that a lot of people play, but what I have to say is that we're on the forefront with a lot of things. There are other school districts that seriously have still not heard of some of the review games and things that we use, all right, at our school, which has been pretty amazing. Now, the community. We have a great group of gentlemen and some ladies that do Civil War reenactments. They are the Sons of Union Veterans of the Civil War. If you go ahead and go another one. We have members like Gary Shield, Bob Mueller, Tom Griminger. We have a lot of great resources of people that really just eat, breathe, sleep, that sort of thing, and they want to impart their knowledge on our kids. So what better way than to incorporate some of those people in our school district? One of the things that we have done several years, but since COVID, we have not, we're wanting to revisit this, and we got in trouble with the elementary one year, I'm sorry. Because one of the gentlemen built himself a replica cannon, and we set up a Civil War Day where you have a whole bunch of different stations where the kids would rotate and go through, and it could be a lot of different things. We had a great woman that went through like weaving, stories of women during the Civil War, encampments, what it's like to train. But this guy loved his cannon, and when he set it off, the kids go wild. And of course, you can't just set it off one time. You have to set it off multiple times, and just so happened, I think it was during map testing in the elementary, so. But the kids had fun. They had a lot of fun. If you could click this link for me right here, I just want to show something that we do kind of like give to the kids as well, which is a great resource, something that Bob Mueller and the Sons of Union Veterans have come up with. They've compiled a list of almost every member they know of from St. Genevieve that served in the Civil War, both for the Union and also for the Confederacy. So if we were to go through here, all right, if you could stop right there, like here, we have a pausner. Not sure if it's related or not, but one of the cool things about it, it tells like their rank, where they were located at, if they know where they were buried, so the cemetery where you can find, like where that person might be buried. It's just kind of a cool thing right there. And what's really interesting that I had no idea about is I have like a great grandfather that's on there. Jackson Van Buren McDaniel. If that's not presidential, I don't know what is, all right? But this is a great resource that the kids kind of like looking at, too, to see if they have any relatives. Something else, too, and Dr. Oldham may talk about this, have a picture of our Catholic Church right there. We have so many things to offer within the community, not just, you know, from the standpoint of like, you know, Civil War, like, you know, reenactors or anything like that, but we have great architecture, things that the kids need to learn about, what religion, why we have that particular religion maybe like in this community, how the community was formed, who like was running this particular area, what country at certain times, you know, during the last like couple centuries and everything. So to understand where you're going, you have to understand where you've been. And so that's one of the things that we want to do is bring some of that local parts into our, in our curriculum there. Next, making connections and having some fun. All right? As if the Civil War Day and throwing, you know, blasting off a cannon isn't fun, there are other things that we need to do in the classroom as well. We want to give our kids as many opportunities as possible, and I'm sure that a lot of you with the New York Times, you played Wordle. It's probably what you did. Stayed up late at night, maybe, got up early in the morning, you spent your five minutes, whatever, doing your Wordle. But how many of you guys have actually done Worldle? All right? Probably none. All right? Maybe Stadle. All right? So Worldle is very similar. You have to guess the country. All right? It gives you a percentage, how close you are whenever you guess. Stadle, we kind of use this more at the sixth grade level, because honestly, whenever like they come into middle school, their geography and social studies skills are pretty, very, very, very basic, and so we're trying to get them excited, and why not, you know, do something where they can get out their phone, they can get on their computer, they can get to this stuff and start relating. And we found that really through like a lot of the map quizzes that we have done, where we concentrate on even like some states and capitals, oceans, continents, we find by the time they get to seventh grade, and even world history in eighth grade, that some of their basic knowledge has now kind of gone up, and they're a little bit more aware of what we're talking about whenever we mention certain topics. And another one, too, I forgot, Mission was global. That one's a pretty awesome one as well. So if you guys get an opportunity to do any of those, they're pretty great. So this is the geography component, and I'm, okay. I included a video, and this is an old one. As a matter of fact, Dr. Taylor, your daughter Ari is in that video, so that shows you how old this is, all right? But we like to, you know, get the kids to understand how government and everything impacts them, and more specifically, kind of like elections. The courthouse has been great working with us to be able to take and give students the opportunity to understand how the process of an election goes. So we take and we register the students. They take, and they have to check in with an ID. If they don't, they're turned away, all right, unfortunately. They have options to vote. We have exit polling, so that way they're getting all components of the election process. And we had a video that was on there that was like the mannequin challenge, when that went, was a big thing several years ago, and we had all of them doing their parts, and everybody was completely still. They did a phenomenal job, except for the basketballs in the background. You can see my thing. Now, old things made new. The Oregon Trail. You may say, oh, my gosh, I remember that when I was a kid. Oh, man. Well, they actually have a digital version that's on the internet now. It's fantastic. And you would think, there's no way kids would like playing Oregon Trail. Dude, they love it. They absolutely love this game. When we talk about Western expansion, it's also, I know myself, we do a cross-curricular activity that incorporates math, also language arts, and even interpersonal skills with each other, too. What they have to do is they are given a presentation, they have to make decisions, you know, along the trail, and they have people in there. They have to pack a wagon. Then they figure out, oh, what dysentery is, you know, like those sorts of things. And then you have educational moments like that. But then people might decide to make a choice, it's not a good choice, and somebody gets, you know, killed off in their particular wagon train, and then they get to find out who the weakest link is within their group, because that person ends up falling off the wagon, so to speak. Shark Tank. Even though this is a new thing, we take something old and apply it to Shark Tank. Myself and Dr. Oldham take, and we have inventors during the Industrial Revolution, and to get them comfortable with realizing, hey, you know what? I have to pitch ideas to people. No matter what I do, I have to get out there and sell things, all right? No matter what occupation that is. So what we do is they have a, an inventor that they take, they have to take on the role of that inventor during that time period, give those presentations to the class. Last year, we decided to give them some fake money, so then at the end, they kind of got to vote who their favorite one was, all right, and they earn maybe some bonus points, but it was all related to, well, how good is your pitch? We had somebody that built a cardboard mechanical reaper last year. It was absolutely incredible, all right? Next, this is one that Dr. Oldham had found. This game is 50 years old. As if the Electoral College is not something that you want to like read about and participate in on a Saturday night, you may want to play landslide, all right? This 50-year-old game is something that once the kids play, they ask to play again. They want to do it the next week, and they're like, Mr. Oldham, can we do landslide? And I think Dr. Oldham has the same reception to it. A 50-year-old game, these kids like to play, and in the process, they're learning how the Electoral College works and strategies along with it. Major awards. Man, we have a Civil War film festival as well, all right? Once we get done with this Civil War, these kids get a chance to pick a topic, they dive into that topic, make that documentary, they submit it, win an award if it's the right one, all right? And they get to walk the red carpet. They get a little trophy, all right? They have a little red carpet, we got a little VIP poster and stuff, we print out awards and stuff, and those kids love that. Hands-on stuff. I don't think that, I think that hands-on things are understated, I think, with all the technology. Sometimes things that the kids love the most is being able to get their hands on certain things. Whenever I had sixth grade, we did some of these things, but now that that's moved to eighth grade, I know my wife has taken on some of these with like cuneiform, all right? Something that, you know, your ancient Sumerians were able to do. So we take late habits, and they can actually, they do like their name and everything, so learn how the owls work. You may see the little apple right there, all right? So I used to mummify chickens, is what we used to do in sixth grade, little Cornish game hens. And it was funny, because like at the beginning, the girls were like, ew, yuck, no, and the guys are like, yeah. Oh, actually, I'm starting to know. The guys were the ones that didn't want to get their hands in, whether or not. The girls were the ones that dove in. But she takes, and instead of doing the Cornish game hens, the same thing works with apples, and it's a little less gross. Now, we want to do gamification as well. Dr. Oldham does a great job of doing gamification in his room. One of the things that is kind of a hard concept for kids to understand can be like the Constitution. So one of the things that they do is the Bill of Rights. So the first 10 amendments are our Constitution. So why not give them tools to be able to try to know what some of these amendments are, and then play a game as well? So we do hand signals. And what they're doing is I made up a game with a deck of cards, because you have an ace all the way through 10, representing First Amendment all the way through Tenth Amendment. Face cards or steel cards, and I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but what they have to do is they have to demonstrate a knowledge of the actual amendment. So for instance, right here, Kelly is getting ready to do Freedom of Assembly. Hey, come here, we want to join. It's the First Amendment, one finger, right here, all right? We have right here, Rhett is doing the Fifth Amendment. Fifth Amendment, your right to remain silent. We cover our mouth, five fingers. Right up here, Jackson Jones. Jackson is taking, doing the Sixth Amendment. This is your right to a speedy trial, all right? Tap in our wrist. Right down here, all right, Darian over on the right-hand side, Third Amendment. We can fit a quarter right here. No quartering of troops is what this is. Three is a crowd, all right? So we go through all that, and believe it or not, out of almost 80 kids, 96% was what they received on this Bill of Rights test. And a lot of them, and Dr. Oldham will even say, too, that whenever he's got his seventh graders, we do, start this in sixth grade, continue in seventh grade, that they just knock it out of the park. They remember that stuff. And I even have kids in high school like, hey, I remember doing those hand signals, and they'll come up and do certain things. I'm just glad they remember the right-hand signal. And one of the last things that I'm going to say before I turn over to Dr. Oldham right here, is something that we want to try to involve kids in and realize that's in the community. This is an opportunity, this is actually the newest one that's getting ready to take place on Saturday, October 28th, in the Old Memorial Cemetery there in St. Genevieve. It's called the Deja Vu Spirit Reunion. This is a great opportunity to go out and see the cemetery, but then have people play parts of people that are buried there. You can meet, meet, I said, Missouri Senator Dr. Louis Lynn. If you don't know much about Dr. Louis Lynn, a cool thing about him, this guy was buried three times. Three times, all right? Started out there, moved out to Valley Springs, and then was moved back to where the cemetery is right now.
Had a window on his casket.
That's right. And they said that he was amazingly preserved whenever they saw that, too, paraded through town. You get a chance to meet Merchant Fernan Rosier, early community leader, Jean Baptiste, and the victims of the Dr. Franklin Tube. We have a steamboat accident that happened a few miles, all right, from St. Genevieve, and we were one of the more prominent cities. So what happened? They brought those victims to that cemetery, put them in there. They were a couple of people that played the part last year, and they did a fantastic job, all right? So if you ever get a chance, check this out. It's a really, really cool experience, and I think some of you guys maybe have been. It's a really awesome opportunity. All right, and Dr. Oldham?
Mike just about covered all of it, so.
I'm, it's okay. All right, I'm just going to tell you a couple of fun things we do. Paul, if you want to hit the link there, if you don't mind.
Thanks. So what I do in my class is I actually, the front page is about me, and we're not going to look at that, I don't care about that, but what, the big thing is, is right here, if you just click on that to start with. I always have the kids, I take pictures of the kids first day of school and put that on social media. And so scroll down there, see, so there's all my kids. And so I do that to start with, and I do that every year. So now it's become pretty fun, because I've been doing this website now, I guess, eight years. So now you can kind of really go back and kind of see the, like an archive of that kind of stuff, which is kind of neat. Paul, would you mind just hitting the one drop down there? Thank you very much. So just kind of give you an idea, this year, some things that we've done. All right, so if you get an A, you get to, they put their name in there. This is actually a real refrigerator door. And so they put their name on the fridge, and then I put that on social media as well. And so, but the big thing is, if you go to 22, 23, Paul, just like, first semester, put some box, please. They go, cool. All right? So this will give you an idea, like I talk to teachers in the Ukraine. I do that every year. They're actually student teachers, which is really, really fun. So I have to get to school at seven in the morning, well, they'll want to keep talking. They ask great questions, like, how do you deal with crazy parents? And I'm like, in the Ukraine, huh? Okay. It's the same questions that we get. But as my kids start walking in my first hour class, they're asking the kids from Ukraine questions. So my kids are getting to talk to those kids, those student teachers, and they're just neat, neat people. It's something else. And they're obviously going by, doing this remotely right now, their classes, which is relevant. So I use Instagram a lot, because that's what the kids use, all right? And so if you want to follow me, it's SG History Teach. But like, for instance, I actually, Stone Age, I actually show the episodes of Flintstones. A massive parent fails, so many kids have not, never seen the Flintstones, which is terrible. But they do. My kids are all about Be Real right now, so they have a simulator for that, and they were actually using, like, the Iruphappens at that time. We did Snapchat in the classroom, we use that. I happen to be smart, I swear I live in a potato. We're getting ready to do this now. I started it today. I have a school in Turkey, where my kids actually Instagram and Snapchat those kids from Turkey, and they'll be doing that while we study that section of the world. And then we also get with Croatia, we'll be doing that right after that, and then we'll do Greece after that, and then we'll do Italy. And so there's about 10 different countries that I have classrooms, we set up, my kids actually talk to those kids all over the world, which is fun. Mike was talking about the landslide board game. Guys, I played that in 1971. Literally, that's, and so I was like, this is a really fun game. So I had to go on eBay and buy the board games. Isn't that funny? Right? It's funny stuff, right? I went and scrolled down a little bit. So Mike was talking about how, you know, a lot of things don't need to be technology-based. And so you actually have kids, you put guiding questions at each spot, and then the kids have to add something to the question, they answer the question. Then you rotate them, and then they have to look at that, and they have to dissect which response they want to disagree with, all right? That's the track. Well, then they rotate again, and then they have to add on additional points that already, it's not already been discussed before. Then you rotate them again, and then they have to break, boil it all down to like two or three of the major points in that. And this was about a moment, but that was, right? It's actually kind of a fun little activity, it really is. Paul, if you, just hover over that, would you? I'm not going to go through all these. to go through all these. All right. So you can see, we took, I took kids to Germany in the summer. I'm taking kids to Denmark this summer, by the way. I have a class over there. And by the way, it's not, this isn't like any future things. We pay $5,000 and you hang out in suburbs. They'll actually go to, they'll go to school two days a week, two days of the week. They'll actually live with a host family in Denmark. We're actually going to row a Viking ship out on the fjord, which is like really going to be fun. And so we'll do it this year. But we do that. My kids talk to kids in Morocco, which is really fun. The roly chair joust thing is a blast. I didn't invite you guys to that. We actually get on a roly chair and my kids put on hockey helmets and shoulder pads and then they have a lance. They try to knock each other off. And it's really, really fun. And it's a blast. And they come with their own shield and stuff. So Paul was the principal at the time. I said, Paul, I want to do this. And he looked at me kind of funny. He's like, you sure? I'm like, yeah, let's do it. And he's like, okay, let's roll. And so we've done it. It's been that way. All right. And so really, kids don't get hurt very much. And then the Denmark thing, I mean, it was about four years. We send them candy to Denmark. They send us candy back. And then we do a live Zoom call in breakout rooms. And the kids will hold up candy. They go, what am I eating? And then the kids describe it and then we describe it to them as well. So why am I telling you all this? Because it's world history. But I teach it like, let's go to this place. So if we're going to, if we're going to talk about Italy, let's go to Italy. Let's talk to the Italian kids. All right. And so this is kind of how I teach them. It's just a lot of fun stuff. You know that, man. You guys can come anytime you want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick thing, I think, is, I think, if I'm not mistaken. Oh, and I think the biggest thing, just to wrap everything up too, if we, and I've already kind of said the same, if we don't understand our past, we don't know like the future and everything, or what path we're going to go on here. And so that's why I think that it's so important. And honestly, I think us as social studies, like teachers too, we wish that this was a subject that was tested. We really do. Because we think that it is a necessary component, especially for Americans, because we have people that come to our country that actually know more about our country than we do. And I think that's a shame. I really believe that, wholeheartedly. And so while it's not always the, maybe the funnest subject, there are dry areas, we try to incorporate as much stuff as we possibly can, rather than like, it's a bunch of dead guys on a page with this date and that date sort of thing. Trying to make those connections to them is really what our job is. And I think the last slide is something that Dr. Taylor, when he was there, coined. And this is the thing, I think that at our middle school, we have absolutely continued to do, and that's that our kids are worth whatever it takes. If it is, like I said, taking kids to Denmark, if it's exchanging candy, if it's exposing them to a game that's 50 years old or something like that, or taken to a cemetery, whatever it is, getting them that exposure, we will do whatever it takes to make sure that they have an experience. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, on to the next exciting topic. 2023, 24 bus routes.
No emergency operations plan?
I see, I'm just so caught up in the social studies. You wanted to jump to bus.
I wanted to jump to bus routes. Emergency operations plan.
Yes. So up on the slide, there's not a huge overhaul of our emergency operations plan. Again, we don't make those public, but you do have access to it, I believe, on four dots. We've made a few updates as far as necessary changes, but we're still kind of tweaking them. For instance, we caught a nurse change that just recently happened. So I had to update those names. So there are a few minor changes like that. Updating our emergency app, I think Ms. Toombs alluded to it. I think that's been the biggest shift and they've been working really hard to make sure that we get everything imported. But once we're familiar with it, we've been training staff on it, but I believe once we're familiar with it, it'll give us the ability to check rosters. Even if they're not in our own class, we'll be able to, as managers, be able to see who's unaccounted for, be able to maybe react a little bit quicker. So that's the goal with the Crisis Go app. And the school safety grant, they have reopened it. They have decreased the amount available to schools. We were, I believe, one point away from getting it in the first round when Officer Clark submitted a proposal for that. But we have resubmitted for that and that will help us with a few of our emergency operations needs. We did have to take a few things off, like stop the bleed tourniquets, but there's still things on there like secure entries for certain areas that we still need to upgrade, surveillance, the cameras and different items like that. Our emergency personnel meeting, that's to be determined, but usually around fall time, we like to meet with all our first responders and we get valuable feedback from them. And I think with us switching over to the Crisis Go app, going through, having them download that so they have access to all their plans, just like they did before with Quick Access, but then also talking to them about how they can get alerts and figuring out which alerts are best for them, because we also don't want their phone going off for every drill as well. So we need to make sure that we adjust it in a way that's useful to them. And I believe that's all I have for the emergency operations plan. Do you have any questions?
I do. I was talking to one of the bus drivers that, but he uses the small bus and they only pick up two kids. Is, I mean, I was just kind of shocked that you only picked, they only picked two kids up.
It depends on what kind of route it is. If it's a.
I thought it was in town.
It could be a bus route that we need an extra person on. I'm not sure. But if there's only two kids on it, there's a reason.
There's, why I forget there's a reason.
Any other questions for Dr. McClark?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the updates to the St. Genevieve County R2 School District Employee Operations Plan for the 2023, 2024 school year.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're going to go to the bus routes.
In your packet, you will see a detailed list of all of our bus routes. We currently have 30. Two of them have been discontinued due to very challenging times in employing bus drivers. And I think that's not only across Missouri, but across the country. That includes Perryville. We added a PM route to Perryville this year. Our student enrollment justified adding another, really returning to what we used to do by having an AM and PM route. Early childhood special education, AM and PM. And then it's always interesting to see our total daily miles on there. We're currently just over 2,100. So we're hopeful to get those two discontinued bus routes back. But that will be dependent on, you know, Fowler being able to find a couple more bus drivers or a couple of bus drivers returning from some medical issues. So I would ask.
A map of the routes and all that, is it?
Yes. We've been requesting the map of the routes and I'm going to throw a bus under the, under the bus, throw Buck under the bus. Yeah, we're anticipating those any day now. They weren't quite done with all of the changes, seriously, with all of the changes that they had to make to adjust for these two routes that were discontinued. They had to change some of those maps and they're updating those and they're going to give us to, give them to us as soon as they.
Are we still covering the same area even with the discontinued routes?
Correct.
All kids are getting picked up? Nobody's, has anybody been told you can't ride a bus?
It depends where you hear it. I've heard it, so.
So there are some constraints if you live within a mile of the district. There are also some things we can do if space is available on buses in order to help accommodate some of those challenges within a mile. Brad and Buck came and met with me and we talked at length about the challenges they were facing with bus drivers. And we talked about doing a double route where a bus goes out early, picks up kids, drops them off, goes out again and picks up kids and drops them off. He said they've done that before. That's not ideal. So he would like to reduce the number of routes and put more students on buses that are running. So that would make the buses a little more full. In doing that, we had to tighten up on our radius that we were picking up students.
Can you elaborate the whole mile thing with the state law?
Yeah. So there's a transportation requirement that states that students within a mile cannot be transported. Now, there are some avenues that you can take as a Board of Education. If there's space on a bus and there's no extra cost to the district that you can get those kids picked up, given our issue with having to put more kids on a bus and having less space on the bus, that wasn't an option this year. So like I said, I'm hopeful that we get those two routes back in play and we're able to return to normal practices around here. That didn't mean everybody within a mile got picked up. That meant when there were special circumstances, we could consider those special circumstances and see what we could do as a district to make that happen.
Do all school districts not pick up within just a mile?
That is a requirement for all districts in the state of Missouri. But like I said, each individual district, the Board of Education will make a determination on if that's an additional cost to the district or not.
But do all school districts pick up outside of a mile? Or can it be two miles or three miles?
Some districts have had to extend that to three miles. Some districts have had to make a flat statement that we're not going to be able to pick up your kids if they're within this range because we don't have the drivers to pick them up, you know? And that creates a huge inconvenience for families. That's something we never want to do. So that's, Bailey's done a great job of communicating out that we need bus drivers and trying to help Fowler out. But just like everybody, it's a challenge to keep employees, to train employees and to get them to stay.
Do you know, do we have kids on buses longer than an hour?
We, given our area that we have to cover, our significant amount of area that we have to cover, it's very difficult to run bus routes where kids aren't on buses for over an hour, dependent upon where you are in our community. So there are some. We try to minimize that as much as possible and push that pickup time off so that you're arriving as late as possible to school to get you there.
You know, that's been, that was, that was a thing when, when Dave was in school.
It was.
I was going to say my kids, but then, you know, anyway, because we lived that mile.
I would just, it'd be great if we could avoid it, but it was that way in 1984 also.
Okay.
Any other questions about the bus where it was born?
No, it was not. I was not a thought yet.
I was four years.
All right. It's time to move on.
Any other questions for Dr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the bus routes for the 2023, 2024 school year.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to new business. And the first item under new business is the assessment plan and updated testing schedule. I'm going to turn that over to Dr. McClark.
All right. As you may have heard during one of the principal reports, unfortunately, we've had to add more testing to our schedule. K through three, there's a state law that requires testing to be done with screeners. So we have added that to follow the law. But in the updates, I also want to highlight that we have deleted some of our testing. We looked at it, tried to figure out, well, where do we overlap? Where do we double up? And we're still trying to figure some of that out with like our dyslexia screener. So this year, we're kind of monitoring what's happening with our fluency screeners and seeing, well, what can we remove as far as testing our students again on essentially the same content? So our DRA, we have removed for our first through fifth as well. The other items that have been deleted from our chart are the Missouri Connections, Career Cluster, Inventory for seventh through 12th, and the Gates Unity for sixth, seventh and eighth were also removed from our chart. In the chart, you'll also see that the informal decoding inventory has been added across our elementary buildings. I debated whether or not to put that in the assessment plan because it's not necessarily a formal assessment, but it is a process that teachers are using to kind of screen their students and decide where is it that I need to deliver instruction that best benefits that individual or that group. So it's not a necessary component per se for every student, but teachers are utilizing it. So I went ahead and added it to our assessment plan. The other item to note on the assessment plan is that we have turned it into the student, the success ready student network. And that's part of our waiver that we agreed to with the state that we were going to make sure that we have test security practices if we're going to use the NWEA. Currently, we are relying on our board policy for the test security. And I'm waiting to see, is that enough within our plan for the state? Or do we need to have something that's more map-like where we spell out line by line, this is what you've got to do, here's the training that you go through. But as of right now, we're just relying on our board policy, which also applies to all our other assessments as well. And those are the major updates.
Question about the SRSN. So we've received the state waiver, correct?
Correct. But that's on, so that is more for being able to look at like APR and our reporting processes.
Okay. And so have we, has the network started seeking out the federal waiver to wait until?
They're looking at it. They're starting to have that conversation. But I think they're also looking at what other states are doing. I believe Montana was the most recent to apply for it. And so I think they're looking at, well, what are other states submitting? But I think they're also focused on, let's make sure that we're hitting these pieces for the state before we move forward. So for instance, we're supposed to be creating a new dashboard and making sure that we have that and they have timelines along the way, which are pretty, pretty quick. I mean, like some of them are coming up in January. So yeah, I think they're focused more on that right now, but they're still pursuing that federal waiver to.
And so have, do you know of any other states that have received the federal waiver?
I don't know. Scott, have you, I don't know if they've highlighted anybody that's received a federal waiver to be exempt from testing.
No. We, when we, when we first took up the study, we looked at some of the states that had gotten state level approvals and kind of looked at what they did, what worked, what didn't work, used some of that to base our own strategies on. But we haven't discussed to have anybody, not in detail anyway. I mean, we might have mentioned a state or two simply in passing, but we haven't studied them yet.
Yeah. In the facilitators, I will say for that, that group have done a lot of the heavy lifting. So they're, I think they're behind the scenes kind of reading up on this and pulling together the data pieces and then coming back to the districts and asking for, well, we need this from you. So for instance, they just recently reached out to Dr. Mercer about extending our data agreement to include a few more years in order to gain more data to kind of pursue that as well.
Because the state gave us through 2025?
Three years, yeah. Yeah, counting this year. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I will say that I talked to the State Board of Education member and there was general excitement amongst the state board for the waiver. And so they were excited to see that because they recognize some of the, I won't say shortcomings, I'm sure that word is, but shortcomings of the map test and standardized testing and, you know, getting results back in September when your students have already moved on to the next grade. So.
And the group is really excited about that work too, because what keeps popping up is that we want to, in addition to showing, yes, you've mastered these standards, are you applying them? Are you able to apply them to new situations? So when you listen about the entrepreneur class or Future Farmers of America, like those are the ways that we're wanting to see it applied. And so that's kind of what this, this group is all about. Like how can we authentically display all the great things that are going on in our district while still maintaining high standards for everybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a motion to approve the assessment plan and updated testing schedule for the 23, 24 school year?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the St. Genevieve Elementary Cafeteria HVAC replacement.
Yes. So along with the heat wave that came in the first week of school, out went our elementary cafeteria air conditioning. That included the art room. Our maintenance crew got together and put a couple of window units in there and were able to get the temperature back down to a manageable amount. But in investigating what was wrong with that unit, it was discovered that it needed to be replaced. It's an old R22 unit. So any kind of replacing that unit and having to pay for R22 freon is just ridiculously expensive. That being said, I think these bids are pretty expensive as well. But we did receive three bids. I talked it over with Davy at length to make sure that we were hitting all our bases and the bids were comparable. We feel comfortable with Burns Mechanical Company and recommend going that direction to replace that unit.
So on Burns, on their second quote?
Yes.
That's to fix the current one or?
So I think they had actually three. The second, the second one was an option to go with York. Is that correct? Is that the one you're talking about?
I think the one she's talking about says school provides R22.
Yes. School, okay. So yeah, that is the, we're going to fix or find a unit and put an R22 unit in there and you have to pay for the R22. I think the R22 to charge that thing will be $30,000. Ooh. Once.
Yeah.
Until it breaks again in the R22.
Yeah.
It's, it's, we have a number of old units that we have on our radar that are R22 units that need to be replaced. As soon as Davy and I talked about that and listed some of them, this one broke. And so that went to the top of the list because we obviously can't do without air conditioning in that cafeteria. So.
And the Burns one is the Dakin with the extended one, the longer one?
The Dakin. The Daikin with the extended one, yeah.
Yes.
And I know you and I have had this discussion. This is, I won't say state-of-the-art, but, you know, if we look to replace our systems over a five, 10-year period, wherever we decide to be, this would be up to standard of what we need to do, is that?
Yep. This is similar to units we currently have.
Okay. And our, so then our staff knows how to cedally service those if needed, okay?
And Davy, you mentioned one. There's such a big gap. Any idea why there's such a big gap?
I'm, I'm new to the bidding process, and there always seems to be a big gap somewhere. That makes us sit down and pay a little more attention to the bids and, and talk, talk it through a little more and try and find discrepancies. And sometimes that involves calling them after the fact and, and making sure that what's in this bid is in this bid. I, I can't, I can't explain that difference.
Have we used Burns before?
He acted like this was gonna be a new, new company that we would be using.
Have we talked to anybody who has used them?
I don't think so. No. He, he met with the guy and has talked to him several times. And I, I always ask the question, is this, I don't want this to be a door lock situation where our door locks are electronic, but they're broken all the time. Let's, let's get something in here that's gonna work. He said these units, regardless of who puts it in, these are the units that are currently installed around the district. So we're very familiar with those units.
With those units, regardless if you've never used Burns, okay.
Yeah. And I have one question about the, the payment then. So, and taking a page out of the county commissioner's playbook with the community center fiasco and the roof there, they demand that it's done, it's complete before you get payment. So this is fifty-fifty, it looks like?
Yes.
So I guess just to make sure we're comfortable with that, that we're able to demand that this is gonna be complete and up to our standards instead of getting into that.
Yeah, I agree.
Fiasco. Okay.
Any other questions?
I want to approve the bid from Burns Mechanical Company to replace the HVAC unit in St. Jen Elementary Cafeteria.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there, okay. I wanted to see if there was a timetable. I hadn't seen that earlier, so it could be there before next summer, knock on wood.
We hope. We've talked about that, too. Given the backup in, in getting that type of equipment, there's a, there's a huge lead time on it. We're, I think it will be, I think we'll be good.
Did that make a difference in any of the bids timeline?
The thing is, they're ordering the same unit from the same place, all three of those organizations. So we asked that question, too. So lead time was the same on all of them.
Okay. Good to know.
And finally, on the agenda, esports.
Hello, Freddie. First of all, I want to commend, I did not send this presentation until thirty minutes ago, and it is already in the presentation. So applause for that. Go ahead and go to the next one. So those of you that don't know me or haven't talked to me in a while, my name is Ian Diamond. I'm a high school physics and chemistry teacher. And so why am I in front of you on this Tuesday night? Well, I've been passionate about video games since I was like a little kid. I've been playing them pretty much my whole life. I started on NES. It's technically a little before my time, but that was my first game.
Probably after nineteen eighty-four.
A little bit, a little bit. It was also a really important part of my school experience. I started a gaming club when I was in high school at Perryville, my sophomore year. I was president of it for my junior and my senior year. I went to college. I played a lot of video games. Then I graduated from college. I went to Jackson. I ran a gaming club for three years there. We peaked at around seventy members enrolled at a time. It was a handful, but it was a, it was a fun handful. And then it was even a pretty integral part of my coming to this school that I wanted to bring the skills that I've, I've honed from doing this for so long to this community. I've done it for about the past three years now. We officially started last year, but we were unofficially started the year before that, and we were hanging out, playing some games, doing some tournaments and stuff like that. And I feel that I've really built a lot of relationships and trusts with these students. I, I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of the teachers that they noticed that these are the kids that are not involved in anything. They're the kids that don't want to be there. They're the kids that don't have great grades. They don't really feel like they're connected to the district. And I feel like I give them a, a really good reason to want to be here, to want to be a part of the district, and to feel proud to be a part of St. Jen. For the past two years now, the gaming club has been meeting every Tuesday after school. Last year, we had about thirty paid members, and the number of people who actually attended the meeting was about sixty. We try to keep stats on that just because they're a, a very wild bunch that don't really consistently like showing up or signing papers and saying they were there. So I try to make sure I at least know how many people we got going in and out. Alright, we're good to go. So what is esports? I assume that's one of the big questions I'm here to answer for a lot of you. I'm not gonna read through all of this because it is late. Esports are multiplayer video games played competitively between players online. Most people think of it as, oh, you're like just gaming. And, yeah, you're, you're playing games, but that's not the point of it. The point is that we're treating it like a sport. We're focusing on the competition aspect. We're focusing on developing the players. We're trying to turn them into better people, just like we are in our district at all times. And we're not just competing with our bodies, we're competing with our minds. We're trying to train them to do critical thinking skills, response, how to deal with a crisis. That crisis might be them getting punched in the face by Mario. It's not, you know, something they normally will deal with in their real world, but it's still something that they need to learn a response to that and be able to deal with that crisis in there. We also hold them to pretty high standards. They're held to grade attendance and sportsmanship standards that are equal to Misha. I have been doing a little bit of casual grade checks. We're at the beginning of the year. Some teachers haven't put in grades just yet, but as we get closer to the first grade check, I'm gonna start actually going through and making them submit me some grades and give me some comments from their teachers to make sure they're keeping up on that. The organization is headed up by, or a 501(c)(3) organization called MOSF, Missouri Scholastic Esports Federation. It started in twenty nineteen where there was ten-ish schools involved in it. The spring of this year had around a hundred schools enrolled. And then I went to a conference this summer for it, and the fall semester has over two hundred schools from the state of Missouri enrolled in. And that's just the state of Missouri. They're serving somewhere around four thousand students as of way before the season registration started this year. It's not apparently a Misha sanctioned sport. I would be here for thirty-five plus minutes talking about the mission thing with it. It's a whole ordeal. The short version of it is they're voting this year to determine whether or not they want to move it from a probationary activity to an officially fully Misha sanctioned activity. And both parties are terrified of that because the esports people are really not interested in Misha doing something they don't know anything about, and Misha is kind of not interested in doing something that they also don't know anything about. And we'll kind of see where this year goes as to what we're required to do with that. The other thing that I kind of want to mention here is that esports, e-gaming, I know it's a lot of way, some people describe it, is one of the fastest-growing markets in entertainment. Currently this year, it's projected to be around a seven billion-dollar industry. It's also like just making money hand over fist. All sorts of games are doing this. They surpassed well over six hundred million dollars last year in worldwide viewership numbers. I had a lot of fun charts that I didn't want to show in front of you and go through all of them, just show you a bunch of data. I'm a science teacher, so I like my data. But there is well over the amount of people who watched almost every single other sports championship who watch video games instead because they're people from all over the world. It's not just people here in America. It's not people over in Japan or in Korea. It's people from all over the world watching games from all over the world. Alright, move to the next one. So I also wanted to give you guys some context for the area, too, because the other goal with this is that we're actually getting them not just skills for life, but hopefully we can get them some money for college. That's a thing a lot of these kids are interested in. So this is just a, like, ten minutes of Googling to figure out whether or not these colleges in the area had an esports team. And Maryville, St. Louis University, Mac, CMO, University of Missouri-St. Louis, SIU, Carbonell, Lindenwood, and Mizzou, all within about ten minutes. That's what I found. It's a pretty large group of colleges that do that. Missouri's, and the Midwest in general, is kind of a hotspot for esports. I talked with a bunch of people at the conference as to why that was because it, it seems weird, like, why is that such a big deal? And the best answer we could come up with is, we live in the Midwest. There's not a lot of beaches or anything like that going on. So that's, that's probably the reason it's so popular. I will also point out while we're here, I don't know if it's in this presentation, but one of our students for sure is currently at, I believe it's Southeast Missouri State University. Joe Raymond, if you know him, he graduated a few years ago. He is actually the League of Legends coordinator for their League of Legends team, which is one of the games they play there. He basically manages the other players who are actually competing. And I personally know a lot of students who have been through the CMO esports team. I got one of my students at Jackson a ten thousand dollar scholarship to Central Methodist, and he then got scouted and stolen by CMO, and they offered him a bigger scholarship so he would come and play with them. So it's a, it's a pretty big deal. It's, it's a, it feels weird talking about someone playing video games and making that much money. But that, that's the world we apparently live in now.
Right.
We can go ahead and move to the next one. So we're competing against high school students, and we are currently in Region One. So these are the other schools that currently have a team that we are competing against. Arcadia Valley Central, which is Cape Central, we had to double-check. Cape Central, let's see how that one is. Farmington, Fox Senior High, North County, Richland, and Seickston. I met most of these coaches at the conference. They are all some very cool people. We were all really excited. They had great feedback for me, ways that we can kind of get this program off the ground started. And they are all just people who love their kids. We are in this to, some of them know literally nothing about games. They're like, I am here because these kids are passionate about this, and I want to give them an avenue. A lot more of them are like me and have kind of been doing this their whole life. We can go to the next one. So what can this do for the students? I've already touched on this a little bit, so I'll kind of skim through it. When Misha polled students last year, it determined that eighty-two percent of the students involved in esports were involved in zero other extracurricular activities. No band, no choir, no sports, nothing, no FBLA, none of that stuff. Eighty-two percent of the kids that were doing this were doing that and nothing else. No other thing in the school. And I think that just really shows the importance of this. It's serving a community in the school that is just not normally being served by other avenues in the district. Competition's also just an important part of growing and learning for children. Having that space to compete and handle loss is something, a few hours ago, we were trying to help my JV crew handle. They, we had a little bit of tears. We had to kind of talk them through it. But learning to be not just a graceful loser, but a graceful winner, not rubbing any other pieces between people's faces. The very first day, we had to talk to them about manners when you're competing against other human beings on the other side of the screen, the hair-not pixels. Long-term planning, camaraderie, learning how to handle a task that's difficult, dedicating yourself to something, persevering when something seems like it's going to be harder than you thought. All of that is skills that these kids are learning, and some of them are starting to kind of realize that like, oh, there's like homework for this sport. This is not just like, I play video games after school. And I'm hoping that they, they take a lot away from that. In addition, as I mentioned, they can be compensated for their stuff or for their ability to play in college. The average scholarship attained by a student in an esports program was around four thousand eight hundred dollars per year. That's per year. That's not like one lump split over four years. Now, that average is low, and I'm gonna be honest, because I try to teach my students, you need to look at the data and think about what the statistic is saying. It is not a huge amount of people. So that's why the number is a little higher. But still, any chance that we can give these kids this money is a chance that I would like to help them. Esports also provides an opportunity for kids who are looking to explore a bunch of other career options, way more than simply playing video games. So it's gonna be overwhelming. Let me switch to the next slide. So this is a map of esports-related careers. They pushed this really heavily by one of the people that was at the conference. I am not gonna go through the whole thing, but the general idea is that everyone thinks that esports is right here, this one little box. They think that box that says "high-level player" is all that esports is. It's just you're playing competitively, you're playing a video game, that's what it is. This is the group of people that make esports actually happen. Up here, you have coaching staff, just like you have in other games. Over here, you have physical trainers, performance psychologists, physical therapists. There was an ex-army doctor who was one of the speakers at the conference, who is currently a professional esports on-staff doctor. That is what he did. He helped deal with the muscle cramps. He helped make sure they had good posture. He helped make sure that they were taking care of their bodies, because everyone thinks of gamers as eating Doritos and drinking Mountain Dew.
That's what I like.
But no, you actually make sure that they go out and walk. And they say, hey, if you're playing this for six hours, you gotta do this to help keep your body in shape because you can't do this for six hours. People weren't supposed to do that. Down here, we have journalism, photography, editorial managers. Over here, we have broadcasting, which is something we have a group of students who, the moment I said we were doing an esports team, we had two kids who showed up and said, we want to commentate this. And I was like, I physically can't do that right now. I, I'm barely functioning right now. We cannot do commentary, but I like your enthusiasm. Over here, we have analysts, hosts, streamers, casters, researchers, instructors, managers, sales, marketing, business administration, communication, information technology. All of these are fields that kids can get work on. I have had, one of my students who is in the program, he's a varsity player, has been learning graphic design, which is a field he wants to go into, and he's been trying to come up with a actual logo for us to use for it. He wanted to come up with our own version of the dragon so we could get it on some of our work. We ran into some copyright issues where he realized he was stealing work for the first logo that he did. But we're, we're on the track to have an actual good logo for that. We also got some casters that are, again, wanting to talk about working with that. We have some people who are really just interested in the, helping the people, being team managers, going around and making sure, are you good? Let's keep track of your statistics. Let's talk about what's going on. And it's been really awesome to see these kids just get so excited about something and want to be involved in this. We can go to the next one. So why right now? As I mentioned, I wanted to do this like my entire life, basically. Dr. Boyd can attest, in my interview at this school, when they asked me what was my questions, my first question was, I am doing this gaming club thing. I really want to do esports. Can I please do esports at this school? And they were like, not really sure what that is, but that sounds awesome. We like your enthusiasm. And that was a pretty huge factor in me leaving Jackson, was that Jackson was being a little bit more stingy about wanting to let me do it. I think they realized the next year that they were like, oh, this is like a big deal. We should have someone on it. But I'm here now. I'm here to run it here instead. Over the last two years, I've been shown pretty overwhelmingly that the kid's favorite game is Super Smash Brothers Ultimate, and so that's the game that we're competing in. It's also the thing that requires the least amount of stuff from us and from you guys to put anything in, which I'm sure you appreciate, given all of the circumstances with money, that I'm not asking for thousands of dollars' worth of computers. Tryouts for JV and varsity teams were held the last week of August. We had fourteen students who expressed interest. And if you had seen the group of kids, there's some kids that are difficult to get to commit to anything, and some of them showed up four days in a row after school for two hours to just try to be on the team, even after the third day, when I was like, hey, man, I don't think you're making the team, but like, you can, I really appreciate that you're here supporting everybody. But we're gonna be working with those kids to try to help get them better at the game through some open season practices that we're giving. Currently, we have eight players that were selected. We have four varsity and four JV. Our four varsity players are Charge Roast, Damian Wheeler, Landon Rottler, and Orlando Jordan. And then our four JV players are Justin Harris, Ryder Keiser, Austin Nagar, and...
Ethan?
Ethan, Ethan Kenninger. So those are the four. Also, it's the tenth-grade Austin, that's the ninth-grade Austin, because they yelled at me in the email about that. So those are the crew that we've got. If, if any of you recognize those students or kind of recognize those names, you'll know it's an interesting crew. We've got some top, top one percent in their class students in there. We've got some kids that have been struggling to maintain passing grades in their classes in there. We've got some kids that are more prone to throw a punch than they are to do anything related to school. We've got kids who, one of them won all of their matches, and I really thought they lost them because they were like, oh, yeah, I won today. And I was like, you won? Yeah. And just complete different energy. It's not like the normal, the normal classroom where you kind of get to control how they feel. Each person handles the game in a different way, which is really fun. I've, I've really enjoyed dealing with that. These students are already spending time dedicated to improving this craft at home. Improving their craft is what they are telling their parents they're doing now when they play for eight hours a night. And I just really think that they deserve to kind of showcase the skill that they've developed over time. One of the quotes that really stuck with me at the presentation was a professional League of Legends player. If you don't know League of Legends, it was massively popular a few years ago. It's kind of tapered off now, but at one time, it was regularly pulling Super Bowl numbers every weekend for people watching the streams of the game. They were giving away multiple millions of dollars every weekend, and this guy was a pro player who won four championships in it. And during that conversation, he said, "Playing League of Legends at a professional level was harder than him getting his doctorate or his master's in engineering." He had a master's in engineering, and he said, "Playing consistently at the level he was at at the video game was way harder than getting his engineering degree." And he would never go back and become a professional video game player again. He would probably stick with the engineering. It was more money and more time that he probably would have had. Being able to compete and show this off is, is a really incredible thing, and just getting to watch these kids be so excited and looking back and finding out that some of my former students have been getting to grow in this passion and do this thing that they love has just been really awesome for me. And I also appreciate everyone who's been involved in letting me make this happen and help these kids out. I think I have one more slide. Oh, I guess I haven't actually talked about what this is. So let's get that out of the way. What does this entail? So basically, each of the kids, on the game day, their matches start at four. So at four o'clock in the library currently in the high school, because that's the only place that has enough internet ports, which means you guys might get to see us on some days if our matches run late. days before matches run late. They will connect to the internet on the Nintendo Switch, and they will load up their copy of Super Smash Bros. Ultimate, where they will then in a, on their Chromebook, they're gonna go to a website, and it will tell them, here are your matches for the day, you're gonna play them in this order, and you'll click to join your first match, and you'll get into a chat room that is you and that one other student who has been vetted and approved by their teacher, who is in another student in another district. And you don't know that student's real name, that's not in there, it's just their gamertag, which we need to double check to make sure it's appropriate. And they will then say, okay, are we ready for the match? They'll go through the process of picking which stage they're gonna play on, they'll go through the process of picking which character they're gonna play, they'll battle, they'll enter their results, they'll move to the next round, and whoever wins best 2 out of 3 wins that round. This is not a single elimination thing, this is not a bracket situation until we get to a championship, they are gonna play against every kid in our, our region by the end of the season. So that means that the matches, the preseason games we did, some of them only played three games or three matches. The actual season, it looks like it's gonna be probably closer to four or five on a given week. So 5 is early, 6 is late, somewhere in the 5:30 range is when we're hoping to get out of there. Today we got out a little bit early, I think we were leaving at like 5:15-ish, 5:30.
Yeah, I think JV had less matches today, right?
Yeah, and JV had less matches. Also, my wife, Ms. Megan Diamond, is back there, she has been the emotional support and the backbone of keeping my head together while this has been happening. And so you'll notice that Monday is match day for varsity, I have no control over that. One of the things that the athletic department, whatever, was talking about it was, they were saying, how do we schedule games? And I was like, that's not all me, they tell me when I play, and if I can't play, then I just can't play. Junior varsity has their matches on Tuesday, but it's the same day, or the same way, and then on the other days when they're flip-flopped, so varsity on Tuesdays and junior varsity on Mondays, they're doing practice. And so far, the junior varsity especially have been like, oh, so we just played the video game for two hours. But as I said, they're starting to realize that I'm giving them homework. We have a Google Classroom set up, and I've been making them do, today was their writing assignment, and they were very unhappy when they realized they were gonna throw paragraphs about video games. But that's part of the learning process, as any of you who've had football kids know, they wanna watch those games, they gotta look at the plays, they gotta learn about this stuff. And there is a lot of studying if you want to be good at these games, there's a lot of skills they've got to help. On Wednesdays, we're then doing and alternating our normal gaming club, so we can still have those kids that are like, I'm not interested in that game, I'm not interested in competing, I didn't wanna stretch myself too thin and burn out on both ends, trying to keep the gaming club and the esports open, so we're flip-flopping the weeks, so I can help cater to both of those groups. And the other week will be open practice, so we'll only still focus on Super Smash Bros., but we'll allow any kid in the high school who wants to come, come to the practice. So we can help them improve, we can help have other people to play against, we can show them what it's like and see if they wanna be involved and if they wanna try out with future students. As far as the students who made this team, thankfully, most of them had their own switches, which made this a lot easier. It caps at 10 in the varsity, and you can technically have as many junior varsity competitors as you want, but for every future person we would want to add to that, we would need extra copies of Nintendo switches, we would need an extra copy of the game, possibly the extra characters, and additional internet plugins to set it. So we, we're very fortunate that we've had enough that we can beg, borrow, and steal from students and me and our, our stuff that we've had so far to get it to work, but if we wanna add more people to it, that's gonna be kinda one of the choke points we're gonna have. Thankfully, this is a pretty low upkeep thing, as long as our students don't get angry and break their controllers. Most of the time, we're not gonna have to replace a lot of stuff. We are currently using some awesome old monitors that we rescued from district storage as our way of playing, and that has made the kids a little annoyed because they don't have sound, but I, you guys listen to your earbuds all the day anyway, like you don't listen to anything, just, it's fine. They've had to learn how to deal with it. And we will need to have Switch Online every year, which is the subscription service you pay that basically says you're allowed to play on the internet. Thankfully, they have a really generous family plan where you can pay $35 and up to four accounts can have an entire year of it. You also get access to a bunch of Super Nintendo and NES games that are on there, so if any of you are ever on a board meeting and I'm still around there, I can set that up for you. And then, other than that, it's pretty much just kind of replacing controllers as they wear out, as the buttons get sticky, as the, the kids just overuse them. Some of those kids are aggressive with these things, it's like they're mad at them. The fall season is 1v1, so each of the students has their own individual record. Right now, I believe half of our students across both varsity and JV have winning or neutral records, they either won all but one of their matches, or they have kind of tied, they went 2-2 in their first season games, and the other half did not, unfortunately. But there's still a large season to go, there's a lot of matches for them to play, so they have plenty of time to recover from that. The one that I think is gonna be a lot more interesting, and it's gonna be a lot easier to get people excited about, is going to be in the spring. In the spring, we're gonna have 5v5 crew battles, and instead of it being, well, you're just gonna play against a bunch of people from all over the state, this is going to be five of our kids, five of another school's kids, and they're going to take each other on one at a time until they run out of people, and whoever runs out first loses. So that will no longer be, well, we beat a Cape kid, but we lost to a Fredericktown kid, but we beat a, it's not gonna be like that, it's gonna be, no, we beat Festus, or no, we, well, we're gonna beat them, because we're gonna beat all of them, but we beat North County, and we're gonna go down the list, and we'll actually be able to say like, we beat this team. Because right now, as Charlie pointed out when he was back here earlier, it's kinda hard to tell people their record, when they're like, how'd you guys go? We were like, well, 2-2, and 3-1, and 1-3, and 0-2. And like, that can be really overwhelming, so that's why we haven't really wanted to share out a ton of stuff just yet. We are planning on doing a weekly blurb that we're gonna send out, my kids that are really interested in the commentary, we have tasked them with writing up a blurb as to what each of the students did at the end of the week, so we can ship that out to district office and to the high school staff and everyone in the area. So if you are interested, I can make sure they get that to you guys as well, so you can keep track of how we're doing. And then like traditional sports, there will be chances for our students to attend regional and even state competitions, if they do well enough in the competitions that they're in. State, I believe, is currently scheduled for December 9th. No matter what, everyone will play in the playoffs, and then there will be a regional competition, and the top four from regionals will move on to state. Last year's state was held at Ballpark Village. And this whole MOSF organization and the conference I went to was sponsored by Blues Gaming, which is the esports division of the Blues. So again, you're not thinking that this is a big thing, Blues and Cardinals have been pretty heavily involved in this already. I think we can go on. This is our schedule, we're not gonna worry about that, I already talked about us, but let's skip one. This is a tentative spring schedule, we don't know the dates, but you'll notice it's like the same thing. Two days a week, we're gonna have the games, and then we'll alternate the gaming club with the practice for them. Skip the next one. And then this last piece is just kind of the, how could we get bigger? Because I would like for us to get bigger, I want more kids to be involved in this, I know I've already got a lot of kids who've asked me, what about this game, what about this? So MOSF offers multiple other games, any season, they offer anywhere between four and three games. We are playing Smash Bros. in the spring and in the fall. I also haven't mentioned it yet, and I still haven't had a chance to talk with Dr. Boyd a ton about it, but there's actually a, a unified version of the esports competitions. We have kind of, me and Ryan have been bouncing back and forth talking about that, and both of us are kinda like, we're really overwhelmed, we're both doing new stuff this year, but I think the winter will be enough downtime for me that we can kinda make sure that happens, because I think that's just incredibly awesome. So they do one of those, they have a Switch Sports Mario Kart, and then another Switch Sports in the fall, winter, spring, and then in the fall and the spring, there is multiple other games that are available for competition. The big question everyone always asks is stuff like Call of Duty, that's not the games they play, there are shooting games on there, but they are things that are not bloody, not boring, not graphic, they're more science fiction, it's Star Wars equivalent of violence. Someone gets hit with a laser and they disappear, that's the type of stuff that they are. If we wanted to compete with that, we would need to get PCs capable of running those games, and that would be a bit of a task, and we are again nowhere near close to that. I am stretched thin playing one game that I've heard of, I could not in any way coach a game at this point that I have not played for these kids, but that is just something I wanna kinda let you guys know about, this is again the easiest one, because we already have the material, the kids have the material. If we wanted to expand, it would probably be quite a bit more of an investment to get into that realm of competing. And that would also then require those games rotate, so sometimes a game would be played for a year or two, and then the game would stop being played, and all of the stuff we have related to that game is no longer really benefiting us, which is kinda frustrating. But again, it's, it's not like football where you're doing the same thing for however many years, the game doesn't just suddenly turn to basketball some season, but it might when you're doing esports. And then the last thing is, like we said, we're really working hard on trying to figure out ways to get the equipment to stream the matches, so we can have videos, we can have footage of them, and also it'd be helpful for making highlight reels for these kids, so we can try to push some of them out for the colleges to get these kids to say, hey, here's some of the matches they played, you can see how well they've done, please give them money, so they can come to your college. I think that might be the last one. So here's a couple of pictures from our first preseason day, I think this was preseason, right? Or was this first? Yeah. This is our preseason day, so we've got a couple of our kids here playing. So this is kind of the setup we have, they have these monitors here that are hooked up into the two different sides of the library, they're connected to the internet, the monitors have the switches attached to them behind it, and then currently, this is the junior varsity playing all of these pictures, and my varsity students are around them, trying not to make them nervous, but making them nervous while trying to give them advice on how they play. It's been a really great opportunity, and again, I wanna give out a couple of thank yous, a big thank you for Dr. Boyd for helping me and being super supportive about this the whole time. Super massive thanks to the tech department, Nancy and Brandon have been absolutely vital to this, Nancy is the one who emailed me about the copyright issue, Brandon is who hooked me up with the monitors, we've been working out, trying to get the internet, making sure it works. We had a much better time than some of the schools, some of the schools were playing on McDonald's Wi-Fi or phone hotspots, and we have had solid wired internet connection, four times the connectivity that we need in order to be able to play the game. So the first whole preseason day was just us trying to call a bunch of coaches back and forth, be like, where's your kid? And they're like, I, they're supposed to be playing, I don't know, oh, their phone battery is dead, hold on, we're like, you're making them use their phone hotspot for this? So that's been absolutely essential, the library has been super helpful, making sure that we have that space available, and we've been able to work with it, and just the entire high school and all the other staff that have heard about this have just, I've been constant outpouring of people saying like, hey, Dr. Oldham earlier was just saying, hey, I found this article, I wanted to send it to you to let you know, like, this is another thing related to esports thing. Dr. McCrdens sent me some newspaper clippings, I really got them in my mailbox today. Everyone's just really glad to see this, and they've been very supportive, and I just, I really appreciate that everyone's been that way. So thank you everybody who's been involved with that, thank you for all the support. That's what I got. See if I got any questions for me.
If half your passion carries over to your kids, I am sold.
This is, this is tired.
100%, it does.
This is the, yeah, we, we finished practice, went and got McDonald's, drove here, and then we did play yesterday and play last week, so Thursdays is my weekend, because Thursday I get to leave at 3:30, 5:30.
No, I think it's great, I told Dr. Taylor yesterday, when we took Lexi to Columbia, they featured their, Columbia College, their esports team, they took us in there, and of course, there's kids in there watching people commentate on Call of Duty or something, I don't know.
Yeah. And one of the things I also will mention, another little anecdote, whenever I was at the conference, one of the people that we talked to was a guy from an all-girls school, and he was their esports coach. Because a lot of people just think, oh, you have video games like boys, and unfortunately, I'm still aggressively trying to break that stereotype with my gaming club, I know I have a lot of girls in the district who really like gaming, and they like video games, but boys can make that tough sometimes. And so we're really trying to push that, but he talked about, he had a girl in his class got scouted by a college in California, and she got a $50,000 for playing a shooting game as a girl. And then one of his other students got a $25,000 scholarship to another college that was just for commentary, she wasn't even playing the game, she just was so good at doing the play-by-play, that they were willing to give her a scholarship to come on and do the play-by-play for their games. So yeah, it's, it's insane, it's ridiculous how many colleges are involved in this.
So that's your only sport right now, Smash Bros.?
Yes, Super Smash Bros. is our only game.
And you only do it on the Switch platform?
Yes, yes, only on the Switch.
So can you do, like with PlayStation, Xbox, can you do it on those platforms?
So I believe for a while, there was a winter Madden season, where they did the Madden football games. And I had a lot of students and teachers who have been like, you can do it on that, on there, see? But I think a lot of the problem is just most of what the esports space is interested in is not really sports games, that's not what colleges want, that's not where the money's at in the game. People who play Madden and play NBA games, they wanna play with their friends, they don't wanna watch people, so they try to pick the games, or the colleges try to pick the games that like viewership is going towards. So, I know it seems weird, because like I, I would not think that that was how it would work, but as I've done some digging, that's what a lot of the, the driving force behind it is, is if you play a football game, you'll get 500 views, if you play a Super Smash Bros., you'll get 10,000 views, that's where the money's at. Any other questions?
I know Ian thanked us, I just wanna take an opportunity to thank him, because if you guys had an opportunity, you guys will probably have an opportunity to see our kids in the library, to see them engage with this, I got an opportunity to walk through when varsity was doing their preseason, it's so cool. And it's, it's just seeing the connections and seeing them talk about something that